From June sixteenth, twenty twenty at nine o'clock. If you please silence or shut off your cell phones and join us in the pledge.
You're right.
I'd like to ask Daniel to lead us in pledge today.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Melanie, we have additions to our agenda?
I do. I have one addition, Executive Session one nine two point six six oh two eight. And for the, to consider the employment of an officer, employee, staff member, or agent. And when I speak about donating a vehicle to the senior center, I'd like to do a quick department update at that time. It kind of just makes sense with the slogan.
Okay, very good. Any other additions or deletions from the board or any? There being none, we will move on. Our nine o'clock, well, back to that, we are given a two-minute public comment from Chris and Dad, whatever time we are able to fit it in today. Just to note that, there have been a request from Kevin.
And I have several lead updates, but yeah.
Okay, and so with that, our nine o'clock, we have the natural hazard mitigation plan adoption for tomorrow or that adoption for today?
It needs to be adopted by the first.
Okay.
So.
We'll probably hear the presentation and adopt it tomorrow in case there's been anything. So Daniel will let you take the lead. We also have, I need to acknowledge on everybody we have on the thing. On the monitor, we have Mark and.
Tricia Sears.
And pardon me?
Tricia Sears.
Tricia, okay. So Dan, don't take it away.
All right. So the natural hazard mitigation plan is basically the plan that covers Lake County. And the town Lakeview and the city of Paisley. So it's a multi-jurisdictional plan. So this plan, we have to make sure it is, was it promulgated and current and FEMA approved to receive post-disaster type monies. So it has to be updated every five years. Last plan was twenty fifteen. So OEM hired Tricia's outfit as a contractor. Was it Oregon? Who'd he work for, Tricia?
I worked for the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. And so, yes, FEMA funded, we applied for and obtained a FEMA grant, a pre-disaster mitigation grant to work on actually eight county plans and they were all mine. So. So yeah, that's how this is funded.
So it's been a project we've worked on for two years, right, Tricia?
Um, yeah, actually, a little bit more than that. Our kickoff meeting for that grant was in July two thousand seventeen. But um, when you and I had talked, we actually delayed it a little bit. So we didn't start until kind of winter, spring of two thousand eight.
So since you've been working on this plan and everything, we've had the most unusual disaster, I guess, if you want to call it with COVID nineteen and the pandemic. Did that make you, Tricia or Daniel, have to do some adding or subtraction or anything unique to this plan?
Not so much because, and I'm not sure where our pandemic falls in the, stuff's not really natural hazards.
I, I, I know. It's just that's where we're at today. Give us a little overview. Does it change it? Does it?
I don't think it really changes it, but give us some time because I think in the next five years, I think OEM, FEMA, I think there's gonna be a lot of changes.
Yeah.
You know, I look at this pandemic as just like nine eleven. Right after nine eleven, there was lots of changes in the emergency management world. I see another revision coming, if you will.
Well, thank you for that. And I would, I would hope and would probably follow the same, there should be some dollars that come along to build it and work on some of these things. Hopefully, at the state level, the federal level, if it's going to become part of a plan like this, a pandemic and going to be inserted in there, there needs to be dollars to help pay for that. I, I think you're right, Daniel. I think, you know, we had the disaster prepared. It's dollars come after nine eleven. They came right on down for the public health or the sheriff's department or whatever. I think this pandemic and the way that it's gonna happen, there's gonna be some dollars to start getting prepared for that. Anyways, I didn't mean to take you sideways, but you know, everybody within your world and us have been thrown into the unknown.
Yes.
So.
Now, on that same note, we've had enough recent, not really disasters, but experiences, you know, with flooding and stuff that, you know, updating the plan actually worked pretty good. One of the things, one of the documents we searched hard for and finally found that the plan was like the flooding for, there's an agreement to clean out the Willows from when they did the flood structure back in early two thousand. Correct. Well, we couldn't find that agreement. Well, we did, Tricia tracked that down and it's in part of the plan now, so it's a reference. So now we have that because that was a huge thing in preventing future floods.
That, that's really good. I was aware of that myself as well because of kickoff my commissioners had, I worked on that project. And I knew that there was supposed to be follow-up quite, quite a bit afterward. So you guys found that?
Yes, we found that agreement. It's in the plan, so.
And that responsibility on that particular thing is with the town, I guess?
That is correct. So now it's in here. So we all have it now. We can reference it, so.
Right.
So some of those kind of things that really in this plan have been official, so.
Good. But um, make sure you have questions, Tricia or Dan?
Oh, um, actually, one of my first questions is on Lake County, you're listed number, one of the first names listed there, it goes down Kevin Hawke, Christine Arlen, Ken Cooper, Jennifer, but then we have Ken Kessler and Dan Shown listed alongside of Mark Alwerson as county commissioners, although it says former next to their name. Is there a reason why they're still on the list? Is it because of past experience?
It was because they started with the, they were there when the project started.
Oh, I see.
So it shows that everyone that provided input in the planning, even though those people might not be there now, it was.
Right, okay, so when their names are mentioned basically throughout the document, this is who they are, basically. It just goes back and. Got it. Okay, sounds good. Um, so we got droughts, it looks like, at the top of the list of major concerns. And we've also got floods in the same risk category. I always think that's kind of strange, but.
One year's drought, next year's flooding, one year's drought, next year's flooding.
Change that to a flash flood.
Yeah.
Flash flood, there you go. Um, what, what's your thoughts on drought right now? I know we have it on our agenda for potential update from all water masters. Um, we have, we've had a little bit of discussion about the potential for drought right now and a declaration for drought on the county part. What's your thoughts on it?
I know when OEM talks drought, on the council I've been on, I've looked out the window and it's like snowing when they talk about it. So I'm like, give us time, we, sometimes they talk about February. I'm like, well, let's get to March because sometimes we get all our annual rainfall and snowfall in the month of March, so.
Or June, in this case for us.
So I'm not totally sure. I'm not sure what the drought monitor is showing right now for our area with our recent rains and.
Uh huh.
So.
Yeah, it seems like it's just below normal or at least average. So I suppose I was curious.
And I'm not sure what occurring so early by, I don't know if Tricia might have some input to that or not, but.
But before our plan, the five-year plan and the drought cycle, potential for drought and for compact catastrophic fires is where that this plan comes into place, if I'm not mistaken, if it gets to the disaster part of.
And these hazard annexes, and Tricia might have to help me on this a little bit, but it's, it's not a game when we figure this stuff out. But we sit here with that committee with all those people and we label all these potential natural hazard events. And then we, we rate them on what's most likely, less likely, so to speak, you know? One is like how likely is it to happen and then what's the effect of it? You know, is it affecting lots of people or is it only affecting a small population? And then there's, there's actually a risk now, so I can't remember the name of it right now. Tricia can try to think of it, but.
Is that one of the reasons why air quality is at the top? That is one of the high risks as well? Is that largely pertaining to the air quality of the urban growth boundary of Lakeview because there's a high population there or?
I think so. That might be.
Because like Christmas Valley typically doesn't get, you know, a, any degree of smoke even during burn season because it's also a lot of way out there, so.
And then there's some air quality. We, we put it in our twenty thirteen kind of first, they weren't so sure about it. Well, we put it in our plan and since then, several other counties have actually addressed air quality. Okay, because it's becoming a buzzword, a hotter topic.
Uh huh.
You're hip.
Yeah. Did you just use buzzword and hot topic to save them?
Tricia, am I allowed on those hazard annexes? Is that kind of the best way to explain that or?
Yeah, so it's um, yeah, it's called the OEM methodology, basically, over the years. We do a little analysis. Um, so given that you have plant, natural hazards already identified in an existing plan, we go and we look at those and then we talk about whether or not any new hazards that need to be identified. Um, sometimes that happens, like Daniel mentioned, the air quality one, actually a couple other, Harney County, we added it to their plan. Um, when I worked with the city of Menford, they actually already had air quality on their hazard list as well. So I think Lake County and Menford were the only ones that had that as a natural hazard already identified. Um, but now more are indeed gaining it. So, but it is, yes, indeed, an analytical process where we look at different factors, like Daniel said. Kind of categorizes sort of a low, medium, high in terms of how frequent is that event happening? How likely is it to happen again in the next, between, you know, zero to five um, years? And then how much population and property would it impact? And so we made some ratings on that, tidied them up. Um, and came out with drought and air quality actually trying for number one. In fact, they had perfect scores. There's two hundred and forty points possible and they both came up with two hundred and forty points. So um, so that was pretty interesting. And then what that does is kind of help focus some of your mitigation actions. You wanna, um, right, honestly, it seems logical if you have a really high hazard that you'd want to do something to address it. So to help figure out what those hazards are and what really the highest impact ones are that you want to look to then trying to do something to alleviate those impacts to your community. So that's what a lot of that is about. So that we've developed quite a few mitigation actions around our natural hazards that we identified for the community.
So saw the wood smoke, it's more towards the natural hazard of catastrophic fire and that smoke coming into our country not our air quality from November till March or whatever. It's more.
Yeah.
More based around whenever there's a catastrophic fire and we're inundated with a whole bunch of smoke in this community, which has been a great concern of ours and a lot of complaints that we have air quality during the winter that we monitor. But during the summer, we're inundated with the smoke that is actually causing the hell out of our, in my, is there a separation or?
Those are, but those are both described in the air quality annex. So it tried to be comprehensive to identify all the kinds of air quality issues that you have. Um, and then just, um, you know, describe some of the activities that you're doing to alleviate those. Um, if there, if we thought there could be something like, I think one of our mitigation actions was perhaps having another air quality monitor um, located somewhere else to help keep track of how the air quality is doing in different parts of the county. Um, and you're right, Lakeview has a more serious air quality issue, at least from our conversations, than we found in other parts of the county, certainly due to topography and geography. So the thing, the thing about identifying those hazards, like you were talking about funding earlier, one of the things about recognizing what your identified hazards are um, and, and identifying some mitigation actions around that is that you can very easily use those as launch points for funding opportunities. Um, so in the plan, we do have information about funding sources. There's an entire annex on uh, funding and grant resources. Uh, and then the mitigation actions have some language about kind of short or long-term actions and that's sort of short-term, one to two years, long-term is more like two to five. But in that is also the element of, do you have enough resources to actually do the mitigation actions? That's a obvious, a serious consideration. Do you have the capacity to do what you want to do? Now we recognize that you might not always have that, so we try to identify that in the plan as well. And then, like I said, identify some resources to help accomplish it.
Very interesting. Those resources on the air quality during the winter, if there's any resources. Because we've worked very much with our school ed and others to try to wood stove replacement, all that kind of stuff. Uh, the, the other, then you flip over, my mind flips over to the summertime, whenever we do have some smoke problems and we're talking resources and things. I think it being in there, that's opportunity to promote and ask for more mechanical um, control of our, our things out in our forest, get our densities down and try to help our forest DLM, group state, find a way to have better forest health out there.
Be more fire resilient.
Yeah, yeah. And so we, we, I don't have a document in front of me, but um, we can get down in the weeds and the brush.
Well, I think.
A lot on.
With the smoke. You know, for my stuff, we have to be at least twice a year and talk about it. I don't know. I'm hoping to be in the next couple of weeks with the committee and say, hey, here's the final plan, start looking through it.
Right.
And seeing where it applies to your department, if you will, because there is like the mitigation actions Tricia was talking about. There's sometimes there's funding out there to help address some of that stuff. As long as it's in the plan, then you're successful in going after that funding. If it's not in the plan, you're not being so successful in going after that funding.
Yeah, you need to check that box and go to the next level.
Exactly.
Yep.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I did have one other question or a couple. Windstorms has a risk score rating of about a hundred ninety-three. Now, that's, that's realistic to me because I live in Summer Lake. And typically, it's about eighty miles an hour there on any given day of life.
I just drove by a car through Saturday.
I almost called you.
Did you see some, I don't know if you looked at the document.
Day shelter.
There's probably like lots of foes in the plan.
Yeah, but I was, I've seen that. It's a beautiful place. Um, but uh, I, I noticed the close second to it is volcanic activity and volcanic events. And that's, the close second is a hundred and twenty-nine score rating for risk. So I'm curious on what exactly volcanic events is pertaining to as far as do we have any kind of potential of volcanic activity here within Lake County or are we talking about ash or something else from a larger volcano somewhere else in Oregon or nearby? From other potential locations? Because the only real, the late, the last real, real active volcano we had was Squaw Peak. And that's been dead for thousands of years, no activity of any kind as far as my understanding goes. So I'm, I was just curious as far as what the volcanic threat, I mean, a score, a risk score of a hundred and twenty-nine is fairly high. And it just, I didn't know that we had any active volcanoes, so I was assuming that that was basically ash and threats from other volcanoes, some other places in Oregon. Am I correct in that assumption?
Do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
No, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at Daniel because Daniel's sitting in front of me, but yes, Tricia, yeah, you can go right ahead.
I want to add some stuff I've learned with Tricia's.
So um, so the, first I'll start with just, the volcanic one is a really interesting one in the sense that, um, you know, pretty much all those hazards that you have on your list are pretty regular hazards, right? The frequency is, is common. Um, volcanoes don't happen to erupt very often or have activity. But the thing about in that scoring matrix that we're using is that if something happens, you'd actually have a pretty great impact. And so that is the part that really bumped up the score for the volcanic event. Um, and there's some decent volcanoes near you to the south in California, like, um, right? They're not too far away in Northern California. Um, and then, yes, there are some in Central Oregon as well. So some of that would depend on the air circulation, what way is the wind blowing and how that might impact you. So yes, you could get ash. That would be certainly the most common impact you would have. So I don't think a lot of influence are likely to, to reach your city. But um, so anyway, yeah, that was sort of the interesting thing. And it's, it's been one that when I've worked with other jurisdictions also kind of comes up with some interesting questions and kind of like, well, what do we do with this? Like volcanoes don't erupt very often, but we have this score that shows that maybe we should think something more about it. Um, so that's, that's the thing. It's a, you know, with any given kind of scoring system, you have, um, you know, I guess benefits drawbacks, if you will, or just sort of the quirkiness of whatever system you're using to try to make that analysis. So that is one of the quirks.
Okay.
Um, but yes, the main thing, and especially I think in Lakeview, given that it is a valley and really have some air quality issues, um, which we just touched on, then if you have some ash coming in, you would have even more um, potential for some challenging respiratory impacts and other things.
So does, um, I know, excuse me, what about seismic or Cascadia event? That's the buzzword in all my transportation meetings and everything. Um, with the volcano, there has to be seismic events come along with that also, I would think. I don't know where it's scored, where that scored out or anything.
Well, we got earthquakes at two point, two oh one. And I actually kind of suspected that to be a little bit higher on the list as far as earthquakes were concerned. I have a lot of geologist friends and everyone always talks about that. Um, but again, so, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and that one is also interesting, again, causically the same kind of thing, like that's a super big expected event. Doesn't happen very often, but it'll have traumatic impacts when it happens. Um, for, for Lakeview and a lot of Lake County, you're, you're further from the impacts of a Cascadia subduction zone um, earthquake. So in that sense, it's a little, little bit lower. I mean, you have a lot of unreinforced masonry buildings. So you will have some, some building collapse. Um, but they're only a couple of stories a little bit, so you have a little, little less impact. Um, but you also have, again, Northern California, it looked like, um, I think it was Scott Utley actually who um, brought up a couple of interesting points about the frequency of the earthquakes that happened in those mountain ranges, which seem to be, you know, mostly in the sort of two to four range. So noticeable, but not huge and, and not really causing a ton of impacts to your jurisdiction. But nevertheless, so that's, I mean, the score came out low in that because um, the number of people and property impacted and the severity of our inundation range.
Yeah, I think the impact is, talk Cascadia, is not going to be necessarily the damage. It's going to be the need for our infrastructure to build up full and the amount of people that need, we, we have to be a partner at that time. I guess that's all my discussions is, is if, um, if it really hits the coastal part of Oregon and Portland and all that, we're going to be, our infrastructure is going to be overwhelmed and infrastructure can be down to uh, the fiber, to the internet, to actually roadways and other infrastructure and so. Um, when that Cascadia event happens, we're going to be a big part of that disaster relief, I guess you would say.
Absolutely, yeah. We had that conversation in Harney County as well, recognizing that the eastern Oregon jurisdictions are going to be essential to the rest of the state in terms of providing resources or being places of refuge and things like that. So, yeah. Unfortunately, there's not like a, there's not a scoring category for that. Um, so we do try to mention that in the natural hazard mitigation plan, but it's not captured by a number.
But I don't know if we're looking at the risk assessment. I mean, we would certainly like to see more of the yellow, lower risk stuff, but all our stuff is in high risk.
Right. He's going to be saying that there.
So meaning, I mean, you know, if it hammers, it's going to affect a lot of us. We just look, the frequency is way low, so. And I think that's why you saw drought, winter storm, you saw that stuff higher up there is it affect the frequency is higher than the rest of the stuffs.
Got it.
Right.
Yeah. Do you have further questions, Commissioner?
No, I just, nothing really of any huge importance. I think it's, it's really detailed. I, obviously, I cannot, I have not been able to go through this thing in its entirety in any great detail. So if I have more questions, I can always bring them back to you. And how, what does the amended process look like? If we did find things or we found things that needed to be changed? You said you wanted to meet with the committee at some point in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, because I want to go to another, another meeting with them so I can check that box. OEM only meets twice a year, so I think keeping a running tally of what we need to fix and tweak. We don't want to be admitting it, you know, a year because it just takes, you have to give an OEM's approval, then a few minutes of your approval.
Got it.
It could take time. I think one of the, that was COVID for somehow Tricia got it approved in like record time, so. If things good out of COVID, that might be one of the things, so.
Yeah, so after this, I guess, two things I might mention, yeah, after this, of the resolutions from Lakeview, Lake County and Paisley, I will be writing those to FEMA and the very next step would be for FEMA to issue their, their full approval letter. Um, so that all the jurisdictions are fully approved for the next five years. And that means you're eligible for both pre and post-disaster funds. There's a, quite a few different categories that provide a lot of funding sources for you. And so keeping this eligibility is really quite important. Um, so that's kind of the process. And then, if you don't mind, I, I might just add uh, a section that you might find really interesting. I know I did. That's why I put it in there. It's called success stories. So there's a section in the natural hazard mitigation plan where we tried to capture some of the um, the things that your community has done and have done well. Um, I think it's really important to take time to appreciate the kinds of problem-solving efforts that have been made and kind of tell that story so that you could, you can see that, you can use that also in applications for funding when you're able to show like, hey, you know, we got this done. We solved this problem and we can do it again. Um, I think those are really valuable things there to potential funding sources. Um.
Okay.
So just want to point that out.
And I think prior to working on this plan, only a few of us knew what the natural hazard mitigation plan is. Now there's several more folks that understand it. You know, I think one of our local experts, believe it or not, that really knows this plan well would be Jason Jaeger, because he did go through it and helped prove it, so.
So, for Lake County, like you and Paisley, you have to, each one of us have to approve the plan. Are we the first one to get through this?
I think Lakeview did theirs. Was Paisley doing theirs today?
Paisley's doing theirs at two thirty today. Yeah, I think you did theirs, the signed one. It was Thursday, two eleven.
Melanie, yep.
Yeah, so is there any change you guys want on the resolution that I wrote? I sent it to Paisley in the town, so I guess it must be okay.
It must be okay. I have something, Tricia, too. I don't think, did you see what you went that?
Oh, I didn't send it to her.
Oh, um, no, it's, it's short and sweet. It's totally fine.
Yeah.
Some people put a few more whereas in there, but what you've got covers it well enough.
So you have this for action today. It's not on for tomorrow, is it?
Uh, no, it's done. It, it's, uh, that's blank, so we can put it on today. So it's done on the date of. But it's, it needs to be done this month of June.
Okay. We just carry it forward till tomorrow.
Yeah, all right.
Uh, anything else on it?
Just one real quick last question. Has, I know the ranking system hasn't seemed to change much since two thousand thirteen. Has, has there been any changes in the last few meetings that you guys have had or in the last couple of years?
Tricia, you know how much it changed from our twenty thirteen matrix?
As far as the high-risk categories and stuff, have, have any of those things been moved around at all?
Um. Yeah, the, I know what, I don't have that graphic right at my fingertips, but, um, you're, you're right. Some of them didn't change very much, um, in terms of order. I think some of the numbers changed. Um, and it was just, again, interesting to see drought and air quality. Um, and it was just, again, interesting to see drought and air quality tie well for first place. Um, so their scores were both up on previous.
Okay.
Not taking on the twenty thirteen, I think the air quality was farther down.
Yeah.
Because that was just becoming a topic of conversation.
Got it.
When we did the twenty thirteen.
Because it looked like drought has had a two hundred and forty risk score since two thousand thirteen. So it's, I was just curious how everything else has kind of fluctuated. If that's remained at the forefront of our thoughts since then.
And wildfire, I think, changed just a little bit. That one, we have actually a lot more data and information um in this plan. So kind of a lot more about what those wildfires look like.
Okay.
Uh, so that's, I think, useful as well. And Daniel was, Daniel was able to note that uh which ones had evacuations related to them. So it's also an interesting thing to note, and I haven't had anyone else that I've worked with be able to provide that information. So that's kind of unique to to your natural hazard mitigation plan.
You good?
No, I'm good.
Chris, Daniel, thank you so much. We have an honor agenda to adopt it tomorrow, do the resolution. We'll get that, no one will get that right speed. All right, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
Yep. Our next item is uh, we're going to talk uh water conditions. It's going to stay on the list into the water master here in Warren Wells. Nine thirty. Mr. Meyer, please come up. Water master.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The voice is a little weird this time of year. They're bringing continuously this last weekend over there. Yeah, and lots of it. Um, did we get any here?
Yes.
I was in Sherman County, so I don't know how much, but we did get some.
Probably less than like, is it in Sherman County?
Yeah.
So uh water conditions are low. I don't know what else to tell you. Um, regulation has been pretty slow, too. Um, it all goes to having rain at the right time for a lot of the pasture grass people. Uh, most of the alfalfa growers are groundwater, if you will. Um, haven't had a whole lot of regulation. Started out first in June with a couple of phone calls, uh, then the rain hit, um, Crook and Creek. Um, some on the uh Codwood Creek, but the rain came, was enough to slow everybody down. Uh, actually, after that rain, um, our big user on the end of Codwood Creek, Holiday Ranch has called and asked to put the shut the water back in the dam because they had, I mean, they had to dry up the rain. So we're able to, you know, carry some water or restore it and release a little air on, which is always important in these desert bases. So um, regulation has been fairly mild. And that's always a water master's dream. Um, no complaints out of any of the other creeks as of yet, although I haven't returned all my phone calls from this last I had fourteen phone calls in two days on dealing with water.
Okay.
Most of them were, I don't get my water turned on in the city. But reservoir, reservoirs are, and I talked with um, uh, Tom O'Leary up in um Summer Lake, the Q figures, they'll probably make it through um mid-August on Thompson Reservoir. And uh, the reservoir's out here, Drew's and and Codwood. Codwood's low, but Drew's has enough water to carry the district over, Westside Water Users over for the season. We'll probably be starting pretty low as far as carryover goes. So, you know, it depends on what happens next year as far as um things go. Uh, Sheawood Can and Deep Creek are running lower than they were last year and the year before, but those were actually pretty good years. Um, seems like everybody knows how to get along out here through those drier years, uh, because it's just happened so often after.
Well, last year, we we had a really wet year. It was like a hundred and eleven or something like that.
Yeah, if you take a look at like, um, what was going on up in um the dismal um snow snow tell sites up there, we had plenty of water. And we were looking really good right up until about February. And then things kind of took a swing. Although we were running over a hundred percent on dismal. Um, we don't have anything direct in um as far as the Sheawood Can system goes. For um snow tell sites, we have to rely on some of the boundary sites to kind of get an idea of what's up there.
Right. Yeah. I was looking at the charts on the snowpack and about February, you're right, it just sort of the snowpack tapered off.
It flattened out.
Yeah. And it was not looking good, but we got all that moisture towards April.
Yeah, and it started coming and it came it off a few times. Um, yeah, now now we'll get plenty of it once they get their hay cut.
Yeah. As soon as the levers start cutting hay, we'll get more rain. So.
So as you guys are aware, they they removed part of my district, which I was really grateful for. I can actually get things done now. So uh, some of the projects I've been working on down here is we're revamping all of uh Westside, uh, Liffey Water Users District. We're revamping all of their monitoring equipment. Um, I put in for a grant and was able to get a grant for program forty thousand dollars to redo and update all of their equipment into more modern equipment. So we'll be installing that over the course of the summer. Uh, they're working with the watershed councils on a couple of other projects out here. Um, mostly from the monitoring end of it, because most every project that goes through requires some type of monitoring. We make, um, the water is very efficient out here. Uh, and when we improve their, improve their sys- systems, really will. So I just put in a new uh new measuring device over in P D F on what's called a town diversion. But we can put that in. Uh, we have a second one slated out there when they get done with the work on what they call their start out diversion. So when that's done, I have, I already have the equipment purchased for it. It'll go to be installed and get put in. And then we'll teach the districts how to maintain and measure their own water. Um, because frankly, I don't have enough time to build the the four stations for, four new stations for them. Three new stations, I'll, you know, bring my numbers back up into the fifteen range. And it's just, you know, it's part of, along with the administrative work I do with transfers and um, just the paperwork into things and then try to get the build work done, just doesn't work.
Right.
Oh, I just want to tell of some of the water improvements are appreciated.
Um, yeah, it's a chart or two.
It's great. The efficiency in the distribution of water, it's much more regulated appropriately. It goes a lot further, so.
It does. It does. Um, we don't have one user, you know, while it's hogging all the water.
But I've seen a different, um, two different pieces of property that I'm associated with. So. Good. I attribute that to maybe better regulations and on the right amounts going.
Well, a lot of it, too, has to do with, you know, out here, this district, you know, they, I, you know, I get a little frustrated when I talk to individuals over in Salem, but um this district out here, people have been, you know, in and out of water shortages for the last, well, ever since they settled the settled the basin out here. And uh, a lot of it I attribute to the people here. They know, you know, their neighbor needs a little water, they'll like to kick a little inch for you, that kind of stuff. And and that goes a long way.
It does.
Um, you know, rather than coming in, you know, in a full regulatory mode of this tank and, you know, water cannons.
Then that's most of it. But whenever you have one that doesn't do it that way and then tends to distribute it a little bit more equally, then.
Well, it it makes us get a little bit more.
We're being politically correct.
Yeah, I know. Um, but you know, for the most part, they only have maybe less than one percent of the people that are hard to work with.
Yeah.
Uh, they're, you know, and that's a true, it's it's very few. You know, you learn who they are, usually the first year.
Yeah.
Because they they push the limit always.
Yeah, if you're without neighbor of that one percent, then it's challenging.
Yeah, very true, very, very true. But you know, as far as water goes, um, you know, um, as long as it stays like this, I know we're going to be kicking up in temperatures again uh towards the end of the, end of the week, which will be nice because I'm freezing my rear end off. Uh, about two, lazy to build a fire. Uh, uh, things will, things will be going well. Hay will be on, things get calmed down. And then it's a big search for soft water for us in here.
So where are we looking at from Lake County as far as asking for drought uh drought declaration?
Well, that, you know, the drought declaration is kind of too cold. The natural resource end of it, which I'm involved in, and then the political end of it, which you're involved in. It's my job to feed you information, you know, as far as what's going on, as far as snowpack stream flow, what I'm seeing as far as regulation and whatnot. And it's up to your end whether to file or not. Um, you know, it is up to you guys. I can't tell you whether to file or not. So I can just give you the information and let you make an informed decision. Um, right now, we're about done in the south end of the basin. We're about done as far as irrigation goes. I mean, that's the very typical thing. It'll start falling off pretty quick.
What what we have is we represent eighty two, eighty three hundred square miles.
Mm-hmm.
And on that side over there, they're basically almost in severe drought conditions, say the high desert. Whereas the valley here might be okay. And uh.
Actually, I think they're doing pretty well over to the east.
Are they doing okay?
Yeah, I was over there last weekend and there's still, you know, I measured a hundred and forty, you know, I actually had the, I couldn't, two hundred eighty three CFS. No, no, that doesn't mean anything to you. Um, but um, that's, it's below what it what it normally is. Uh, but everybody seemed to, you know, have water. And I'm talking to the ditch work writer um over there, that everybody seems to be satisfied right now, as far as the MC group goes. Um, haven't talked to too many people down on, you know, the flush side. Did get a call early on about regulation. I held them off and then I haven't heard anything. I literally held them off because there was still snow up on Drake. And temperatures hadn't come up enough to where you start seeing the flows coming off of those hybrid, you know, those nine, ten thousand foot creatures. So I held them off and I haven't heard word since. So um, stream flow was, actually, I was really surprised. I I measured twenty two last week at um a twenty mile creek, which is trying to hide for this time of year. Usually California, you know, they're pulling all the twelve mile they can over in the Bidwell, um, which is a big, is a problem. You know, on the Oregon side, because we get shorted. And there's not much I, well, they don't want to regulate more in California, they're legally limited. You know, to have the water master go up and check to make sure that they're within their legal limits, you know, it's kind of difficult times over there. But um the the flow were looking really good. In fact, is um, honey creek was still flowing fairly well, you know. I think it was in the twenty range, which is really different for this time of year. Um, usually it's it's um boomer bust over there. You know, I've had years where literally I couldn't measure the water because it was, there was so much of it and moving so much of it off honey creek that I couldn't get into it until July. I've got to walk up that canyon from the base, your engaging station is up there, it has to be above the the uppermost diversion, which is what we call the JJ diversion, you know, the JJ ranch.
What's um, what's it been like with this transition from the north end of the county being out of the center district?
That's a good question. Uh, I think there's a little bit of confusion. I still get phone calls, which I find, I feel, you know, general water right questions. But as far as transfers and stuff, there really isn't that much that goes on up there, um, other than, you know, here apart now stuff like, you know, uh, we looked at a twenty sixteen area photograph and it appeared that these weren't, were appearing to be trying to move, so. That it it and it's actually the transition's going more rather. Well, I haven't heard from anybody other than um Tom O'Leary up there about anything that was going on. There was some equipment issues that, you know, that swirled over. Some of the people didn't quite understand what was going on.
Who's the main contact of the dent office for that, for the northern district now?
Bill Mishman.
Bill Mishman.
Yeah. He's actually the assistant water master and um, a well inspector.
Okay.
So he's been, he's been dealing with um the Silver Creek system, essentially. Um, I know he runs in there. I know Jeremy runs up there. It actually takes two of them to do what I do. So, um, Jeremy, Jeremy's the water master, but Bill does most of the work up there. He's the assistant water master.
So Bill would do the lot, the little inspections on Chris.
Yeah, like uh, oh, the well call we had earlier this year, um, from that one couple up there, Matt and Rachel. Um, I noticed that they had a well that was on site and resolved their situation. So that was taken care of.
And uh, but Silver Creek, that's the.
Silver Creek and Buck Creek, uh, Bill, Bill, Bill or Jeremy. Yeah, look in the office. And you can find them on the internet.
Yeah. And that line is drawn pretty much a picture on pass.
Pretty much.
For the most part. So you still have Summer Lake area.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which Summer Lake isn't that big of a deal that the district operates. You know, most of it's under district and then the majority of the rest of it, well, the the rest of it is all groundwater. Which we, uh, well, in the one major land over there, uh, state organ.
Right.
Small ones. So that's been quiet. Um, appears that the stream, you know, Anna's putting out what it should be, you know, within a region. I mean, we have plenty of fluctuations on that, but um, it's been, it's been fairly steady over the past fourteen years I've been here.
Yeah. Okay.
So there there's a few issues going on up there right now with the transfer. Um, and then um, I requested the district um apply for a water right, that they were going to hold water past the irrigations in the inner reservoir. And then we're working on that right now.
And that they're not going to have that water right?
Off the pool to its natural level. Yeah, that's uh, they they don't have a water right to store water. So they'll often be the natural water, you know, you could dam that side. So have you ever seen one, they're doing maintenance on the reservoir? They're kind of.
Yeah.
But uh, ODFW need to work out some things internally, you know, before they move forward. And things are finding to be forward where they've actually sent out an MO and will use to um take a look at between the districts and and uh, ODFW. So, ODFW wants a fishery. And it's good for the local area, more or less, so. They're going to move forward, but our problem was that there wasn't any water available, but it it's not a matter of water. It's kind of scary. And then we had to get some buyouts from some third party individuals on the.
So ODFW want a fishery, like a fish hatchery?
What's that?
ODFW want a fish hatchery?
No, they wanted the fishery that Anna has, the, you know, the strippers and the trout fishery. You know, they wanted to make sure that that stayed intact. There's never been a water right on that reservoir, other than it gets a diversion dam, that's what it is. There's no storage right behind that.
So any of the water, you want the water level.
They'd like to, they'd like to have it stored so that they've got a fishery there, you know. That's, that's their big push. Oh, still haven't retired. How about you, Brad?
I just wrote it down, six months, fourteen days.
I actually have a coupler on my phone that counts backwards, too, because I, yeah, my sixty second birthday is.
I, there may be a vacation or two in there for me. I have some restored vacation time coming.
I mean, Drew's.
My two fellow commissioners tried to kick me out of the office. They were, go take a vacation, get out of here. You're here. You know, I'm just kidding on that, so.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Well, you guys know I'm at, you all have my cell phone number. This this time of year, that's the way to reach me. Um, last week I was, I think it was in the office one day last week and the rest of the time, but now just making sure everything's caught up. Okay, we're there.
Sounds good.
So groundwater levels are holding out, too, by the way. Um, I just did my well map, which I measure, I'm gonna measure this end of North End of the county, all the North End of the county. Um, we have a group of wells out here and they're following in line with what they normally do for this type of year. Very good. So that's good. Probably see a ten foot spring back when we, and actually we see some creeks up. You see Big Johnson, uh, like that side, so.
Good. All right.
Thank you.
Take care of the fifteen locals we're waiting for. Have a pleasant day.
Brian.
Well, thank you, Brian.
It's our work crew, the company, finished that project for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing that up to me. Uh, one other thing is their workers have been great. They've done heating station maintenance for me in areas where I needed it, where I need, you know, things cleared back from the banks. We poured concrete. Uh, putting some steps in places where I'm hiking down a bank, banks with heavy equipment. I mean, they've been excellent, you know. Kudos to your people.
Thank you.
These have been awesome and nice. And thank you.
All right.
See you later.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. All right, so next item. This is your show, man. Kevin Hawk has a fellow one for each ripper attachment. Kevin has another appointment, not yet to make it. Please talk to us individually. See you, Dan.
See you. Thanks.
And so whatever kind of overview you'd like to give.
All right, I will skip the microphone. Pull this up. So Caterpillar one forty ripper, this is going to fall under rule eight for purchasing. I believe it's rule eight, uh, for sole source because, um, it needs to fit the equipment that we have. And, uh, this is, this is a used piece of equipment, so we're getting them a little bit cheaper than normal, um, what it would normally go for. They're also buying it as a, Kevin's looking at it as a part. It's not a piece of equipment. Because it's basically parts for the, uh, the actual piece of equipment that we would be utilizing for the actual graders. So he's purchasing it as a part line item out of his budget and we did approve, we looked at that through our road advisory committee. So, uh, the dollars are there. He's looking at purchasing this and it's a really good buy in comparison to what these normally go for. And it's in really good shape, so, um, that's, is there any, any questions I can?
No, I, I got an update from Kevin yesterday and I might, was able to make phone contact with each other. Little help with some efficiencies, those would go up more rate among the graders up there, um, for efficiencies. I'm in support of act on tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Albertson, you got any questions or anything? Just chime in at any time if you're still on.
I am still on. You guys do enough coffee for all of us.
Coffee.
How's it going, Brad?
It's going good. Next up, uh, we have Ann's budget resolution. So while we take a coffee break and get in.
Sure.
So she has power training.
That's right.
And Jada's too. So I told them we can reset if needed.
So we can. We're, we're going to go with the two minute Kevin show right now. We have two minutes for Kevin, Leonard, for a public comment.
Uh, this should be real quick. It's just more of a notification. After talking to Ginger and legal counsel. I have accepted a position on the Lakeview Community Partnership Board of Directors. So this is just a notification that I am going to be serving on the board of directors and still doing this, but I will not be making comments or requests for money from the board. That'll be Ginger's job for Lakeview Community Partnership. I just want to let you guys know.
Appreciate that, Brian.
Any questions?
Not really. Thank you, Kevin.
So what, what you're doing to make sure there's no conflict of interest in all that? Bingo. I notified the town council at their last meeting, um, and notifying you guys now, so there's no conflict of interest going forward. I don't want to.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate you doing that.
All right.
Um, is there anything that we can move down and kind of get off the list ahead of time?
Yeah, there is. Uh, Jake has his.
I can give a quick Department of State.
Come up, sir. We just suggested our, end up for a quick Department. Thank you for that, Dave. We'll pick you later.
Just helping. So with the, the order to release those vulnerable inmates from Department of Corrections. There was a list of a hundred generated. Lake County has zero on that list. But then there were some follow-up emails that the legislature now wants to see that expanded to two thousand. And that we will have at least three, if not four, on that list if it's expanded to two thousand. She just called a special session for next week. She convenes June twenty-fourth. And then she plans to call a second one in the summer, uh, sometime later in the summer. So I'm assuming those kind, those kind of conversations will be happening next week. It's been from one hundred to a five, uh, two thousand. So I just wanted to, so to quell some of that.
So if it goes to the bigger number and it impacts us.
Well, it impacts us, um, in many ways. One, we spoke, so we've got a place to live. We, I, I'm responsible for, we're responsible for renting housing for them. Two, we have no fine victims of victims. It just expedites our work that much more. Because, um, just looking at the list of a hundred, there was a couple folks that weren't scheduled to be released till October of twenty-one. So here we are getting, they're on the list of you to leave when the governor, or the.
So, um, process, or does it have, and then just have to have legislative support? Can the governor do it without legislative support?
Governor could do the hundred without legislative support, but it's the legislature, members of the legislature, uh, pushing for two thousand. So, um.
Do you know?
The, the governor can commute sentences as she sees fit. That's like the president can, so.
Do you know of any of our legislators are making that push for two thousand?
I haven't got it.
Yeah, just, just wondering if you, if you were familiar with any of the legislators?
I'm not familiar with who's making the push.
Okay.
The legislature, it was pretty.
I know, I know I'd be putting people on the spot with that question if, if, uh, it was, but.
Putting me on the spot, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I wouldn't think so.
So, so the, that's interesting to know that, because I didn't know that. A hundred, above that takes legislative action.
So I, I don't know that it takes legislative action. I think the legislature itself, members.
Are pushing for two thousand, okay.
In their mind, what's a hundred? I mean, you have fourteen thousand, nine hundred inmates in custody. What's a hundred going to do? That two thousand isn't going to do.
Well, I, I guess that some of the world of politics is to ask those legislators that are supporting this is, are you willing to put criminals back on the street?
And, and it, it puts four out back on the street for us, so that's the impact.
At two thousand, yes. So, I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Yep.
A lot of questions.
Is there a matrix of, uh, inmates that are eligible? Is it based on a crime? Is it based on, um, the number of years they have left, no matter how?
Vulnerability.
Okay, so, so then, then that begs the question is, as we want to flatten the curve, not overwhelm our healthcare systems. What does that do to our healthcare if they're more vulnerable to being affected by COVID nineteen? So here, what are they thinking?
You're not preaching this far. I'm making a bloody mistake. One question running through my head.
So, oh, it's good.
I just wanted to keep you guys updated.
I'm just pointing out, the executive order was to not overwhelm our healthcare system, so why would we impact our healthcare system by putting more vulnerable people out in the community? It just. Mark, do you have a question? If not, you're not on mute.
I'm sorry, but I accidentally hung up.
Thank you, Commissioner. You're back on with us.
Got more?
All right, um, interesting. I probably should get out of the weeds and not employ your statements and get back to business. So, thank you for the Department of.
Yeah, thank you, Jack. I appreciate that.
Okay, um, what time do you say on the day?
After ten thirty.
After ten thirty? Okay, let's go on down. Melanie, you're the next one. Let's go to, uh, uh, your vehicle donation and update on the vehicle.
Oh, let me. Sorry. So, you know, I, the jail is been using that Astro van in the parking lot. And they got the, the, um, juveniles GMC, um, trail blazer. And so they've been using that for their meals. They got their equipment out of it and it is valued at seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So, um, we kind of did some of the groundwork and then the senior center called and they asked if we had any vehicles to replace the one that we gave them. We gave them Connie's eight years ago, I think, and it's got a lot of miles. Um, so they did appreciate anything we could give them that would supplement their meals on wheels program to the triple date. And I said, well, I've got one that has a bunch of miles and is over thirteen years old, but I can definitely ask commissioners if you guys are interested. And they were tickled at the opportunity. They think it'll be great for their program. And so I'm asking you guys if it's okay, and I've run this by the vehicle committee and they're in favor of it also. I mean, it'll get us, get it off of our insurance. We're not going to get much money from an auction for it and it's a great benefit to the community.
Do the landfill station benefit from it?
Well, I have an addition for that. I don't think they want this vehicle. It's got a lower clearance and I don't think it'll be very good on. Yeah, it's a.
Buddy needs a mini ramp.
Look at that backboard scratch. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, it's, if you can use it, I would definitely give it to you.
I don't want to.
But I have an idea for you.
So.
And that's part of my Department of.
So back, back to this, this one here and I can't remember if we're, or they're nonprofit and all that, if we can actually just straight donate it to them.
Yeah, we can just donate it to.
Donate it so we can take action on that tomorrow. If they're fully aware of the mileage and that it may have issues in the future, then they're good with that.
They're ecstatic, which I, I told them my concerns and they still were excited.
You know, it may be just the appropriate vehicle for building, building in a very localized area for them, so.
Yeah, and so they might actually take it up north and start doing more needle stuff up there.
That'd be great.
Yeah. But they haven't finalized their plans yet, but I'm, it's a great program and especially right now when the seniors can't go in and have the meals as much because of exposure from virus, they're really relying on these vehicles and.
Okay, let, let's go to, uh, part two.
Yeah, so, um, a little update. I also spoke to the vehicle committee about, um, when we get bondings out of service for old vehicle, um, I would like to transfer it, transfer it temporarily to the landfill for them to use for the time they need it. And then when it's time to sell it, the funds from the, I'll put it on the auction site and the funds will go back to the vehicle pool. But I'm recommending, and the vehicle, vehicle committee is in support of this, to, when we get that one, and, uh, outfitted. Yeah, outfitted. I don't know what the technical word is. When we get all her stuff out of it and the town isn't using it, I think we should give it to the landfill to use for a while. And then it'll come back to us when they're done with it.
And, and this isn't, uh, any more unique than us putting vehicles out at the, the airport.
No.
Whenever those ones meet their life expectancy or whatever, they'll come back and then go under the coming replenishment. And the uniqueness is it's a general fund department, but it's an enterprise fund, so they normally buy their own equipment and everything, but, or I believe this is very appropriate to get it there and, uh, the right thing to do.
It'll save them money. It's really not going to make us much money, you know, it's an older vehicle too. And I think it'll be very well suited for their needs.
Very good. Questions, Mark or James? I'm more versed, because I'm only.
Yeah, no, I, I don't really have anything else. I've got a good plan.
All right, so we.
I, I agree with you, Brad.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Um, so we'll, is that on, act on tomorrow? We'll act on that also tomorrow. Moving along, uh, Melanie Mazzini supports Christmas Valley cleanup ratification.
So they had a group come to Christmas Valley this weekend. Um, I was notified in the Thursday morning. And I spoke to Terry Crawford, who had been in contact with these folks. And she asked if we could donate and I said, absolutely. We did this for the north or the south end, so we'd be very great accepting to help. And so, um, but the thing is, they never got ahold of Buddy. I gave him the, their, his contact information to like work out the logistics. They ended up going and paying for it themselves, but I guess they're planning on another, um, cleanup date in the near future, so hopefully they'll get that part worked out. But I am in support and I hope you guys will, um, support up to a hundred and fifty dollars for their dumping fees if needed. That's why I'm asking for it to be ratified though, because it's already taken place before the meeting.
Yeah, so you talked to us individually, I believe.
Yeah.
And everything, I, I'm definitely in support. I have one, one question though, that we have to make sure that it's clear is that we're donating to a nonprofit or something.
Okay, yeah.
Asking, but we're not just donating to an individual or anything. And so whoever, it's true, I thought it was the weekend and then I, I don't know what group it is.
The North Lake Irregulars.
Are they a nonprofit?
Yeah, they are a ATV off-road club out of the central Oregon area. And they go around to the places they like to frequent and give back.
Gambler's five hundred group and stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so they're a legitimate group that, so to, to ratify this and everything, I'm, I'd like to go ahead and do this ratification today because it's already happened.
Yeah.
Um, I, I didn't, I didn't know that it had happened already, honestly. I wasn't, I was still thinking it was through Weekend Foundation.
That's who reached out to Terry and so there was a little bit of initial confusion. She thought it was going to be done. But then I did a little bit more digging and it was the Irregulars who were a subsection of gamblers or something. I, anyways, I think it's a great project and I think it's worth supporting.
It is a good project. I guess, I guess where I'm coming from is, um, originally, you know, I, I reached out to Don, John Treber, uh, with the Weekend, right after you said that you got notified by, uh, Terry. And he did say that Terry was working on behalf of, uh, them. Uh, but then, but I wasn't, I was fine with trying to do something for their group. But also John's got a whole thing out on Facebook today and, and has, they're looking for donations up to six hundred dollars or something, I think is what they're looking for. They're going to be doing a barbecue in August where they're going to be taking in donations and all the proceeds are going to go to this. So as we move towards giving a hundred and fifty dollars towards a group that's doing cleanup projects. I suppose I'm going to, you know, I'm, I'm advocating for getting things cleaned up on the north end, but what do we do for Paisley? What do we do for the Warner Valley? What do we do for Lakeview? Because all these different areas have similar needs in cleaning things up. So as we give, giving a hundred and fifty dollars towards, uh, central Oregon. Uh, the central Oregon Irregulars or North Lake Irregulars, um, which is a group out of central Oregon. For the purposes of cleaning up and they did, they were out there. They cleaned up huge truckloads of garbage and they turned it into our landfill. There was still some miscommunication on their part as to where, where the dollars were going to come from in terms of for them to dump that garbage. And I, I actually spoke to Buddy that day as well and wanted to make su, I want to make sure moving forward. When we have groups coming to us and asking for these dollars, I want to make sure that these dollars are going to the right and appropriate place. So I would, I'm, I was still under the impression that it was Weekend that we were working with. And I did not know that we had already given this money. I'm fine with ratifying this right now, but I suppose in the future, I just want to make sure that we're, we're really aware, uh, of some of these, of the different groups that are involved up there and, and involved in these projects. Because we set a precedent for sure when we give money to one group, um, the rest will all come.
I, I, I agree and that's, so they asked for fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And I said, well.
That's what Terry was asking.
Yeah, they only wanted fifty dollars for the cleanup. And I said, well, we've done a hundred and fifty down here. So let's say it's up to a hundred and fifty dollars just to try and make it equitable. And I think if other groups throughout the region need that, I think it should definitely be.
So I, I, where I'm at is, it's a great thing. I understand the flood duty, maybe didn't open or anything. I think our process is where a little bit of glitch might be, is, is, somebody's going to come and ask for that. They need to be a little bit more timely and they need to.
I'd lay them before us.
Yeah, and they, they need to, they need to submit that, that form or whatever that shows their five oh one C three or whatever they are where they qualify. Because we've already been hit by just some feel-good people that want to go clean up. And then we get into these potential trespassages or whatever. So I think, um, we all want to see things cleaned up, but we're financially, we can support that. But the process, um, this one here just sort of fits sideways. So I think, uh, we will ratify this. I think the next one, Melanie, when they call is, this is their process.
Yeah, and I'm going to make sure that we're giving you that.
They, they need to be ahead of their game, not behind their game.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I think we were an afterthought for sure.
Yeah.
Um, but I appreciate your guys' acceptance of this and trying to make it. Um, but I appreciate your guys' acceptance of this and trying to make it work.
And then we gotta have the trigger that gets to this fella, our landfill manager that gets to his.
So, on, on that, Mel did send me an email, um, like three days prior.
Yeah.
Or two days, whatever, as soon as she got it, she sent it to me. So Mel did communicate to me. But they never did reach out to me and set up the daytime or the person's name that was gonna be doing it, so. I, I didn't, I didn't call my tenant at Christmas Valley because what's the point of putting that actual work on him? It's not gonna show up. Um, so I just figured they weren't showing up, so it wasn't. It wasn't a miscommunication between me, Mel, Mel did write the thing again to me, but it was those guys, they didn't contact.
And I guess I did not insinuate that, but we, we have to, that group, other group has to get ahead of their game.
Yeah.
Not have an idea and say, oh, we're gonna get money over here.
So I, I have a question, um, said, John's putting stuff on Facebook, asking for donations up to six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Is that all for cleanup? I mean, is that? I mean, are they doing other things with that?
Will go towards cleanup costs and the barbecue.
So are you, your hundred and fifty dollars gonna go towards the barbecue too?
No, but well, I mean, well, that, I mean.
We have made the motion, yeah, but if the motion's made, it'll go to a landfill.
Correct. It'll go to the landfill fund for the actual hanging those pieces of landfill, and that's. I suppose that's another reason why I'm trying to bring this forward, because I wanna be cautious and make sure that we're doing the appropriate things.
I didn't know how you guys wanna handle that too, as far as, but I just do run, run Italian and charge Mel for that, you know? I mean, there's, there's a lot of logistics.
Absolutely, that's the way that I, I would probably do it is, is up, we're gonna prove this up to a hundred and fifty dollars. Whenever they hit a hundred and fifty dollars, you do an invoice to Mel, whatever fund for them, take this out of, and she'll pay the landfill.
So another point that I'd like to make is when we do that, people don't look at the nonprofits or anything like that, Brad, you know, they just see that. We're donating things, and I've had multiple calls from, um, Paisley asking about. That town cleanup day that, when, when are we gonna be able to, you, you allow the dump? So all I'm saying is when you, when you do the Christmas Valley thing, whether it goes to a nonprofit or not, if they see dump fees and that, that the county's giving it to them. Paisley's gonna, Paisley's really gonna hammer, so.
So, so let me clarify, and I'll speak as one commissioner. We haven't opened up free dumping for nobody.
I know you haven't.
This board has all, we have supported even out of county replacement of a portion of dump fees. And I think that's sort of, well, the way we've been thinking, I don't wanna speak for Mark or James. But, um, there's been talk about free dump days.
Well, and I.
But we have not went there. We've, we've said, people, nonprofits, other few parts, other agencies. If you're gonna do a cleanup, we will contribute some dollars towards that cleanup, but we are not giving free dump.
Right.
And so there's miscommunication out there. I don't wanna speak.
I don't, I don't think it's miscommunication, Brad, but people see that. You're giving money towards dump fees and that's, that's free dumping to them. They don't, they don't read between the lines like, like, like you do, you know, or like. Like what we do sitting in here. They just see that. They see that free dump fees or, or donated dump fees or however you're gonna award it. And other people are gonna attack. I've been telling Paisley that the town of Lakeview is working on something. And as soon as they bring it forward and the commissioners make their vote on that, then, then that's gonna, that's also gonna have a triple effect in the Paisley. And all the other outside, outside places, so that's kinda how I've been holding them at.
For me individually, I would encourage Paisley if they have a nonprofit and they wanted to do some.
Well, now that we're going this way, I have to go into, I did, you know, so.
Yeah, I, well, that's what I was bringing up, that, that's that precedent. I, I personally love to see the fact that the north end. Is, you know, starting to take a lot of these, these things on themselves. I've gone down to the Antaresport for years. Every year, when that lake is lowered. My family will go and take walks around the lake, pick up the glass and garbage and beer bottles and everything else, and we go get rid of them. We, we walk down Carlin Lane, we walk down Lakeview Lane, and we go and pick up garbage. Wind blows pretty hard and it takes things out of people's yards and just goes out onto the desert, picked up roofs. That have been out in the desert sometimes before and had to haul them on. The fact that they're getting together and they're looking for donations locally and they're looking for people that wanna take part and be part of something that's good and cleaning up the area. I think that's great, but when we start giving dollars, that's when it sets a different type of precedent. That is going, it doesn't as much encourage that community involvement in the same way as it encourages, well. The county has money, so we're gonna go to them to help us, you know, pay for disposal of this garbage. And that's, that's where it gets tough. I know, I know that there's a financial aspect to disposing. The garbage that you pick up, and that can be one of the biggest strains aside from the fact that you donated your time of the whole day. But, um, if they're asking for six hundred dollars and they're putting out these big fundraisers and doing barbecues and everything else. The question I have now is, why are we giving all this other money, you know, this hundred and fifty bucks?
Because the county needs to contribute to cleaning up the Lake County, north end, south end, middle end, it doesn't matter. I agree that, I agree that the county should supply some money to them. I, I think it's great. I think it's great, I think it's great for all.
Well, I'm gonna go on the record and I'm gonna say I don't. I don't, I don't, I don't agree with the use of these public dollars for one individual area. I, it needs to be, it needs, it needs to be different, yeah, anyway.
Also, for the record, I wanna say that this is from Fund two fifteen for economic development, because I think. A clean area entices people to wanna visit that area more and like stay and visit and explore. So, I mean, it's not just free dumping, like Buddy said, I don't think people understand. It's us trying to invest in their econ, economy.
Right, so, so this, this one's unique, and I think what we have figured out here is, the next one will come before the board of commissioners. We can ask what, why they're wanting these dollars, what their mission is, and our group, or they representing, and we can make a decision based on, on that. And so that, that's the policy that's coming out of this, this year.
And also, this is coming out of lottery funding, which has seen a big hit. So I'm also going to be mindful of betting these projects too.
So, um, I will make a motion to ratify the hundred and fifty dollars for the regulars in North Lake. Uh, to pay for landfill dumping fees only. Um, and that they, we come to our attention that they are a legitimate nonprofit that qualifies. Further discussion, motion's been made in secret, further discussion?
I think it's agreed up.
Go, say again, Mark.
I think it's agreed up again.
Okay, any further discussion? I, I guess the, the further discussion for me is just reiterating that, uh, the next one. Melanie, just let them know that, um, they need to get ahead of it, get, we, we meet twice, twice a month.
And there needs to be more structure.
You can give them my cell phone number too, Mel.
And, and who contacts him, you know, I, I wanna make sure that his crew has what they need. When guys drive out there with a truckload of garbage, they can just say, oh, we're with the group. Well.
No, we're not that one contact person.
We have to have one contact for, thank you, buddy. Yeah, that's where I was going with that, is that, we need to know who that person is. They're representing that group and, and his guys need to know who those people are. So I just wanna make sure that that's, that's in there, you know, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark, he's as full of it today.
Motion carries.
Was that an aye from Mark?
Aye.
I think I should acknowledge it.
Aye.
Thank you, Marley.
Okay, um, you're fine.
It takes me some time to get my mute off.
Okay, no worries.
Uh, we have the thirteenth amendment to O H A agreement number one, five, nine, eight, one, eight. Melanie, you began this with, let me remember, that was public health?
Yeah.
And.
Oh, and then I have the tenth amendment. I don't wanna wrap up on the agenda, sorry.
Yes, we, I just wanna mention that.
Okay, so the thirteenth amendment, um. Is kind of closing out this fiscal year and it's kind of shoring things up, like there's expectations and stuff for the next fiscal year of the biennium. Um, next year, they are planning on spending one hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars for their, uh, programs. And, um, this will go for. Emergency preparedness response, alcohol and drug prevention, with maternal and child health services. And immunization and vaccines for children programs.
Okay.
And then the tenth amendment, which you may notice there was a gap, they, um. Left a couple of amendments blank, just in case there's something between now and Ju- July one. That comes up that they need to amend. Um, the tenth amendment is for extra funding for, um, coronavirus, things that they submitted for. Probably helped apply for.
Okay, those are on for tomorrow's questions. I think we're going to probably continue to see amendments.
Yep, my only concern with a lot of these amendments, and I mean, we gotta do them, and especially, Judy had a recommendation that we approve it. The only issue I have with this is when we, when the state is giving all these other dollars. Uh, even though this is a hundred and sixty thousand dollar, um, allocation. There's always strings attached to that and it actually means more work. It doesn't just mean more dollars, it means more work for our people.
Yeah.
So that's my only concern when they start making these additional allocations to our public health. They're already working at capacity most of the time, so I just wanna be mindful of that. It's my frustration.
Very good point, very, very well said, and, um, but a lot of times. We're having to do a lot of this work without funding to.
I know, agreed, I know, so.
It's, it's, it's that double, double X for, over the next few years, I think we don't see it. As we talked earlier, boom, the funding was, and mandates have come with the funding, so. Right, the interest in this, okay, so that, both those amendments are on for tomorrow.
Mm-hmm, and we, we will cancel these for, for.
Okay, let me see, that. Let's go and try to get in the break, and now at ten thirty, whenever AM are available. You said you had a lady on the page, commissioner?
Uh, well, one of them is actually for AM. Um, I did wanna ask real quick about the jail inspection. Um, as far as, we haven't done our jail inspection this year and the inspectors are going to be here on Friday. And, uh, due to COVID, we haven't been up there to go do that as commissioners. But we, we probably oughta submit a letter to make sure that Rick has that, uh, by Thursday. So my, I guess my question is, is what should we do about that?
So I, I've toured it enough, I'm, I have to say. COVID shouldn't stop us from touring our own jails.
Right.
But that is, that's where we're at today. Um, Rick needs to submit a letter that he can just sign and let's do it.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, is that where you're at?
Yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that. I just wanna make sure that we're having a discussion and that, you know, Mark, is that, is that good with you?
Oh.
Uh, excuse me, sorry.
When did you? When did you wanna do it?
We can take, we can take a recess.
Okay, Mark, it sounds like we're gonna take a quick recess here. The question, so before recess was. Um, the jail inspection of the mandatory, which should go through once a year. With COVID, having been able to do that and, uh, have Rick put together a letter and a sign in support of, uh. Where we're at on our jail operations. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Consensus of the board is have Rick put that letter together of what he needs in it.
Yeah.
We'll sign it.
That's appropriate.
Alright, consensus, then we'll take a break until.
Think five minutes?
Yeah. That's a session at thirteen minutes to eleven. Commissioner Obersten, you still on the line, sir?
Yep.
Alright, thank you for indulging. Um, so our next item, as soon as I get the paperwork turned over here. Is, uh, Ann, come Ryan with the budget resolution, she's coming. To discuss that.
Um, do you, just for, are we, 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 right?
Yes.
Yeah, um, meetings in the superintendent for next Thursday, uh, you guys got that email from Melanie?
Yes, we do.
Or next Monday, I apologize, next Monday, correct. Sorry, there was another meeting on Thursday, nice. Wanna make sure you guys have that. Alright.
Alright, so Ann, we have you up next on budget resolutions, um, so. Clarification, uh, for me, just make sure I do everything correct. Our doctrine would be tomorrow, we don't have to have no more car hearings or nothing.
Correct.
So go ahead with the resolutions that we have.
Okay, so you should have resolutions twenty nineteen, fourteen through seventeen, and I'll just, um, start. Twenty nineteen dash fourteen is in the matter of unanticipated revenue. Uh, public health received state support for COVID nineteen response. And then because we passed through those dollars to the Lake District Hospital. We need more appropriation authority and materials and services to make that contract payment. So the resolution increases state resources sixty-six thousand, one hundred. And public health materials and services sixty-six thousand, one hundred. Any questions on that one? Twenty nineteen dash fifteen is in the matter of appropriations transfer in the jail department. Uh, they will have more personnel services than anticipated due to the recent union contract settlement. And they have savings in materials and services. So the resolution twenty nineteen dash fifteen increases personnel services five thousand, five hundred. And decreases materials and services five thousand, five hundred. Twenty nineteen dash sixteen is also appropriations transferred due to the same reasoning, the union contract settlement. This is the sheriff's department. They will have, uh, personnel services increased seven thousand dollars and materials and services decreased seven thousand. And lastly, queen, go ahead.
So, we have two different funds that is affected by that, is the contract with the town, is this resolution doesn't affect that. There's funding funds in that one, no resolution, that's very, okay, thanks for the clarification.
Uh, when we first budgeted, uh, Fund two oh six, the town of Lakeview Law Enforcement Contract. We had to estimate benefit levels, all kinds of things, and so.
We're good.
Twenty nineteen dash seventeen is again appropriations transfer, um, due to the salary increases of that's the treasurer department. Um, personnel services maybe increased five hundred dollars and there are savings in materials and services of five hundred dollars.
Alright, so any questions on these resolutions? Everybody's good, we'll act on them tomorrow. E-service contract renewed.
The E-service contract is a grants database. We have, um, been subscribing to this service for. I believe we would be starting our third term, so for six years. We, I don't think we use it enough, but it's, um, I hope we do, I'm gonna state it that way. The cost is twelve hundred dollars a year, so I feel like even with our limited use. It's still beneficial for us to be able to access if, if we need to or have more focused, uh, grant needs. This contract, uh, gives us some discounts because of the multi-year, um, contract. And then also due to our, kind of our size, we get a break on that cost as well. So I am recommending that we renew this contract. I did budget it within my treasurer department. Again, I, I wish we used it more, but I feel like it's still beneficial if you didn't, even have our limited use right now.
So I, I, I agree with you, Ann. We've, we've had this discussion multiple times, um. Is there any way we can, if people use it more, or are we missing something? Because it is twelve hundred dollars and we, we need to recoup. In theory, that, under, we're getting grants and everything.
You know, we. Sometimes I think we handle things kind of a shotgun approach, and so. If, if we got to a point where we were more prioritized on, you know. This facility needs this, or, or this department needs this kind of equipment. This facility needs this, or, or this department needs this kind of equipment, or infrastructure, wha- whatever that is, then. You know, those, those searches could be more focused, um.
I think you make a good point, I think for projects, for vision, the board of commissioners needs to be supportive and look at things that we have a plan. And if you call a master plan or a plan, and get, whether it's, and I'm not high on a lot of committees, or have a committee, or something where we. Maybe get a little more focused instead of shutdown approach. I think, I think you make the point that this here would be something that could be utilized that way. Anyway, I, I'm in support of that, tomorrow, other questions?
No, but uh. Just kind of reading through the services that they actually would be providing, are you currently one of the only people that use the service?
Yeah, our, our subscription, I believe, has, well, yeah, one license, so there's one, like, one user and one password. I can share that when people want to search the database, but it's, it is limited right now to how many users we have that can log into that system. Once, once you do, though, there is um, again, a national database of available grant opportunities, and then if you drill down into those grant opportunities, sometimes they will even have successful. Grant applications from the past, so there's like technical advice that's available through this database as well. I think the last time I used it, um. You know, we, we looked at some school resource officer grant funding, we've looked at like, um. You know, communication grant funding and things like that, so sometimes I can find things in there, but they may be specific to. A certain agency applies, or specific states, like it's not available for Oregon, things like that, or it's foundational funding, it just, it's, it's very, it's useful. But we just have one license, one login, one password, and so, but I can share that.
Right, okay, and do they, do they provide any kind of assistance through like helping write a grant or anything like that, it's not, it's basically just kind of advice and.
It's advice and like documentation, um.
Giving access to a lot of that other information out there, got it?
Yes. Yep.
I think there are several of us that are kind of familiar with that, like grant processes, though, so if someone wasn't comfortable, I think. There are a few people around here that would be more than.
Would be able to help through writing a grant or something like that, and utilizing the service.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I do have to say, I, I feel like um. People shouldn't be afraid of writing grants, because it's not like there's one size fits all, every single grant is going to have a different set of requirements and criteria, and. And application processes, and, and keywords to use, or goals that they're trying to meet, and so.
Got it.
It is case by case, and people should just look and try and see what happens.
All right. Any other questions? None for me, all right, let's move along to uh budget, talk and discussion.
Okay, I um updated the, the list that was included in your packet. The Fund one oh three had to be updated because we included. A reduction in a transfer from our general capital projects fund for the software, so I nee- I needed to include that. So, we don't have very many, um, it's, it's very possible that we have a few more that. People just haven't had time to really incorporate yet. See what happens next year, so to start, um, the first budget change is in uh J and I's department for our software conversion. We have actually moved further along in paying for that new software by June thirtieth than I had anticipated would be budgeted, so. Next year, the, the requirement to pay Tyler Technologies has decreased, um. I'm gonna tell you that the, the total cost is a hundred and thirty thousand. We, next year, budgeting sixty six thousand, so we've paid, oh no, about seventy thousand this year, um, it reduces what we're paying next year about forty two thousand. With that purchase, we budgeted transfers from our general capital projects fund to support the purchase. That was a sixty thousand dollar transfer, when we first budgeted, I wasn't sure if we were gonna utilize that full sixty thousand with payments. And now we have utilized all of that sixty thousand, so it is not available for next year, um, which is good, because we have a lesser payment next year.
Right.
So what that means first, Fund one oh three, is they, you know, that transfer does not have to be made. Their beginning fund balance is a little bit less, though, because we've used more of the dollars this year, and so, to balance the budget. There is dollars being requested to add to the impound yard, can be service spot there, um, it's an increase of ten thousand eight hundred in that capital category. So to, to explain that again, that got a little bit muddy, their transfer went down. Beginning fund balance went down as well, but the net difference is about ten thousand dollars, so to balance that fund, we need to increase. An appropriation somewhere, and right now it's gonna sit in that capital category. Again, because of, go ahead.
So, we looking to balance that out of our general?
It, it just balances right there within that line.
Just seem like there within that line, okay, does.
Yep, it's not a, it's not a general fund impact at all.
Just a little bit, sure, okay.
The, the difference between um what was going to transfer into one oh one general fund, and the software purchase, though. Is going to reduce contingency on thirty six hundred dollars, so. So that, there is an impact as far as what we're budgeting next year. On that software purchase, less what we were going to receive on that transfer, but it's, it's minimal, thirty six hundred at least, contingency at. Two hundred thirty three thousand six forty eight.
So, so back up on your, on your BFB, we didn't can balance that for that fund itself.
Yep, that's Fund one oh three.
Okay, so um, we're trying to read across here to change, so that's thirty five thousand dollars plus didn't bought, we had anticipated.
Yes.
Okay, and that's because of the sprinkler fencing project almost complete, um.
Sprinkler fencing, and then a little bit, the, the transfer to general fund will be that total amount too for the software conversion, so those three things. Reduce that predicted beginning fund balance by about thirty five thousand.
Okay, and so, then you get down to the impound yard, that's shown as a positive of ten thousand eight hundred pounds above the budget.
Yep, and that's because that transfer to general fund for the software was budgeted forty five thousand eight hundred, you don't have to make that transfer, it's already gonna be in this system here. The difference between those two is ten thousand eight hundred, so to balance that budget, there's ten thousand dollars that can go towards some project, some appropriation category.
And, and it truly the general fund, though, it's its own department within general fund.
This is our general capital projects fund.
Right, that one is, you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
So speaking of muddying the waters, I have, I have a proposition, and you guys can say no, but I think, I think, so, let me give you the backstory here. I've been getting some complaints about the janitorial, and I thought I improved everything. But I still think I'm gonna need to change things up some more, it's not working out quite how I anticipated. And I would like the flexibility in management, or maybe some part-time work on top of what we're doing. Just to make sure we are providing the best work environment that we can for everyone. Um, my proposition is taking five thousand dollars from my vehicle reserve, and then replenishing that next year. Um, but just to make sure that. And you, and you guys can say no, but just to make sure that, I don't know, something needs to change, I need to be able to manage things a little better, I'm not exactly sure what I should do. Um, but I really appreciate the flexibility, so, and it's not the full fifteen that I asked for, I realize that, but. I need to do something for our employees, I feel like.
So, so do you mind if I speak for this one?
No, no.
Because I am in support of this, so uh. We've budgeted for a few years now for two half-time employees within your department.
Mm-hmm.
You hired an employee that showed some problems to build, which you need more than, and then the shorter timeframe. So, you did not rehire that other position, just as a test to see if this would work.
Mm-hmm.
Through that time, we found out it didn't work, but your fifteen thousand dollars went away during budget time.
Yeah.
And it was taken away from you, we definitely have seen some changes in, in the need for being able to get people time off for sick, time off for vacations. And to build cover for different things, one thing we did do during this whole COVID thing was step up our janitorial side, which we probably should. And um, I, I think five thousand dollars is low, I'm going to support you on where you're going on that, but I think it's low, and I think the need. And what we see every day when we get in here, all we've been doing is getting by, we haven't done the extra on the janitorial that I think is necessary. And that goes to preventive stuff, that goes to waxing and cleaning and, and the extra stuff, and so, for me. You definitely, as a department head, need the flexibility to at least get your employees their sickness and, and their vacation time, and so. I do know that you hired, to try to get us by through some times here, whenever you've got a lot of complaints from a lot of different departments. That gee, the commissioners gets easy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I appreciate how you stepped with that, how you've had the discussions with your employees and everything, um. I'm, I'm definitely, I, I would be the fifty thousand, it's up to me, but I'm gonna support what you're trying to do, to stay within the budget, and everything, so.
Yeah, I appreciate.
I, I just wanted to put that out there, but I have the history of where the reason why we went to two half-time people. Whenever we added this wing onto it and added it, we just talked to them with the restroom, and the number of things, all three floors. And we've always just sort of gotten by on janitorial, we've never stepped it up to the level that.
Yeah.
And that's nothing against you, Mel, you'll take that.
Well, I wanna step it up if, if possible, and if, if you guys don't think that's the best choice, I, I appreciate your thoughts, but. I think we need to do something a little different, um, because we are just getting by, and. Um, I, I think we need at least, I know right now we're budgeted for about twenty hours a week, I think we need maybe thirty hours a week.
Well, the, the reason why we wouldn't do as a board of commissioners, was once you go over, if one person goes over twenty hours, we get into the fifty one percent cost for benefits. So, we've raised, we've made the choice, the direction to have two part-time employees, or nineteen hours a week each, and was able to stretch it all this further. If we, if we're gonna have the discussion to move up to somebody that's gonna be into a full-time position, your policy is gonna be over here.
But aren't we at just two part-time divisions right now?
No. Just one person.
We, we just have nineteen and a half.
One, okay, we're nineteen and a half hours.
Hours of, hours scheduled, it doesn't matter if that takes three people doing it, or two, right, but we're saying.
But we have two people that. Right.
I have an on-call person for, to cover up for her sickness, um, but she's still, and I evaluated the time our. Normal person works versus the time that this, our on-call person works, and they're fairly comparable, but I think there's still like. Some projects that we could do here and there, like the floors and things, that we need to do on top of it, just so they're not stretched to do the floor and do the bathroom, and try to get it all in there, um.
So where is this five thousand dollars exactly going to, is it going to another part-time division then?
Yeah.
So we're only giving the person five thousand dollars worth of part-time workings?
It's not a lot, no, I agree, but.
Not even. Yes, not even.
But I feel like it's a step in the right direction.
Well, you, you're sort of on the right, but at least that gives her, her humility the opportunity to manage. To build it, to get a few things, and five thousand dollars is not a lot, but an on-call person, if you're able to cover that, and it. I don't wanna get down into the weeds too much on people or personnel, but some, sometimes, your best laid-out plan doesn't always. Come to the, to fruition, and that's sort of what we're at, is that you get different skill levels and different people hired, um, you sort of have to get back to. What is, what does it take for an average skill level to get things done, um, so.
And I think, like, with our operation, it's pretty solid, I just feel like it could be a little better, and I'd like to, like, hire someone to come in a couple hours a week. And do like special projects, like buff the floors one Saturday or something, you know, because she used to do a floor every day, but then. I've got her doing extra Corona stuff, and it's hard to do, hard for her to time manage, and so I wanna give her the tools and support that she needs too. Without overwhelming her and burning her out, and.
So, so um. Appreciate you being creative, and two, both things you're talking about, I have a lot of passion for the topic, I'll make that. On the vehicle side, I appreciate that you're able to look at the reserve, we talk of whether we never have to use it, but um. On the reserve side, that's something that you, if you reduce it, five thousand puts you down to thirty thousand, vehicles about thirty five thousand, probably thirty two to thirty five, thirty seven. And depending on how the budget comes out next year, it's for the, you'd be looking to bring that reserve back up.
Yeah.
And you're gambling on that, you know, losing vehicles, you don't have to get to that reserve.
How, when was the last time we were in that reserve?
We established that, we lost a vehicle, we haven't used a reserve to.
When we budget a reserve, you cannot tap it in the middle of the fiscal year unless you hold a supplemental budget hearing.
Right.
So the reserve is truly a forced savings account that you cannot access.
But if we've lost a vehicle, we do supplement, we need, if we, if our contingency or anything looks down to further. So anyways, I um. So I, I would like to take Mel's recommendation, and I've obviously, I've talked to her about this quite a bit.
Oh, I sent you guys all my thoughts, I think, last week when the request came out, um, and I understand it's complicated, and I understand it's a gamble, but I feel like. Right now, not upping our hygiene being is more of a gamble with the coronavirus. But, and I don't mean to throw that out as a catchword or anything, we just, I think it's our, our duty, the employees, to try to do the best that we can.
We don't have to balance an increase in um janitorial staff, front of the vehicle reserve, though, we can alter contingency, you know, we don't have to go through that.
I feel bad, but.
Well, this might not be our only request today, so anyways, we have other things that go, we're gonna be working on a little later, but um.
I know.
I, I'm, I'm fine with contingency or the reserve, either one of them. Just because of our history on contingency, we've been all right, we've been, I mean, we're at seven to two thirty three right now, um, and. Maybe I'm distal, but the two hundred thousand always hits my head, my, my wall would be too big, like, we talked here, assumption, but I'm. The two hundred is okay, I'd much rather be at two thirty, but we have seen a lot of emergency type things.
I don't know, I tried, I'm just trying to be proactive and self-sufficient, and try to make things as easy for everyone, if you can.
So which one do you recommend?
I think we should take it from my, I, I feel better at the end of the day to take five thousand dollars from my reserve. Um, I don't think that would be a big hit, um, but whatever you guys are comfortable with, and you can say no, I just wanted to put that out there before. We finalized the budget, that, I was, and I asked the vehicle committee, or the budget committee during the hearing, if we could do something like that, you know, and so.
So.
Just muddying the waters.
Well, no, it's not muddying waters, it's operations with him, the whole um, it's been a unique year all the way through, um. Do we have to do this by motion at this point, because these other ones weren't by motion, they were just changed around?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have to approve the whole document, all the changes that have been.
Okay, so, by consensus, if there's a consensus board that can be put in there, the document can be changed, and that'd be part of the, the.
The, yeah, what, enact, to be honest, let's back up a bit. The, yeah, what, enact, to be honest, let's back up a bit, what you're, you're providing the instruction to make changes before we adopt tomorrow.
Right.
So the formal action is the appropriation resolution, so yes, by consensus, you're approving all these changes plus what's.
And then you will incorporate it into that document that may be approved.
Um, Mark, do you have anything?
Uh, my personal opinion is I don't think we should. But I'll I'll back you guys up, back what you want to do.
So it's, we'll put it to a vote because we don't have full consensus, so I'll make a motion to uh adjust Melody's budget. Uh, add five thousand dollars to the salary line, I mean, and I don't know the number off the top of my head. And reduce the reserve by five thousand, the reserve is thirty thousand, add five thousand to the um salary side on the janitorial staff.
We have a motion on the table, so I'll I'll second that, can we have a little discussion?
The motion has been made, seconded, uh, further discussion?
I I suppose, I suppose where my concern is, is I just wanna make sure that the. I I don't, I don't know how to have this discussion without. And I wanna be very mindful not to talk about the actual employees or anything, I just wanna make sure that the work is actually getting done, if we just keep throwing money at it, I wanna make sure that. We actually, that we fix these problems, that we're happy. And so that's, that's kind of where I'm at, is if we're going to put five thousand additional dollars, taking it out of reserves for our vehicles. I wanna make sure that there's actual results from it and um, you know, I.
So, so a little clarification, we're not throwing money at this, this replacement. Five thousand to fifteen thousand that was taken out of this person's budget, not by her, but by the process, trying to reduce it. So I don't look at it as throwing money at it, it is, we talk of management stance towards trying to be more efficient. And at that time, the department had um reluctantly agreed with taking the full fifteen thousand. Since that time of the budget time, the department had seen, we have seen. Multiple complaints on the janitorial, the reality of the change is is that by reduction of the number of employees, part-time employees. From two down to one, and no money to even do the on-call or the extra duty, so it's not throwing.
In my view, it's not throwing money at us, replacing. Right, but we also. I was thinking like.
This, this position has, I, I mean, Brian and I have both been along, if I've seen this position, be just nineteen and a half hours in one person.
And so, and I guess that's where I'm kinda happy, because I know we have some new people on and stuff, and I just wanna make sure that. It it, and maybe that's the inappropriate term we need to use for throwing money at something, uh, that's probably not the right way to look at it. Uh, but I suppose I just wanna make sure that um. If 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 the issue is getting more hours to get the work done, then then yes, we need to add additional hours to make sure that that work gets done. But if the issue is. Just the work's not getting done. And they have more than enough time to get the work done, that's, that's where I start to, I wanna make sure that we're finding what the actual issue is.
I wanna, I wanna address, and then I do go back.
That's fine, yeah.
We do go back.
You guys have.
Where, where that is nineteen hours, we added this whole wing. This whole wing on, and the board of commissioners discussion at the time was this, we've added all this on. We believe that there's a need to have more janitorial staff, that's whenever we've reached that, you know, janitorial staff.
Right.
So, yes, I have seen when it was covered by nineteen and a half hours. And I have seen. She had nineteen and a half hours, the amount of work that was done, and we accepted that for a long year. Um, then we may have changed, since some people retired and different personnel come on. And try to something a little bit different, it doesn't seem to be working. To me, or I'm still, and and so just to put that out there, um. Figure nineteen and a half hours and then forget about people or anything and just do a visual or do a walk-around. How many restaurants do we have, how much force space we have, how many garbage bins we have. And think about doing that in nineteen and a half hours. Well, I didn't take anybody's name or anybody's.
No, 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 I hear you, and.
But first, we have to make sure nineteen and a half hours a week is being worked.
Uh, well, I I that, I guess that's where I'm at, and I just.
So, so we're, we're giving culture to the person.
I I know, I know, I know, and and that's why I'm gonna, I'm gonna go a different way here. I've been here late at night when those, that work's being done. This wing in the building honestly doesn't seem to take very long. Uh, we have several trashcans and maybe the floor needs to be vacuumed and. I'm just, I'm looking at the amount of time that's actually spent on this additional wing, if that's going to be used as justification. For adding on additional five thousand dollars worth of uh time to be able to make sure that the job is getting done. I seconded the motion, my second stance.
Well, but second, this gets, this gets.
Well, correct, but I'm not changing my motion into as my my second as in support of the motion. I just wanted, I wanted to have that discussion.
Appreciate it, that's reasonable. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mark?
There, one down, isn't it?
Pardon me?
Nay, sorry, my finger doesn't work.
Okay, I think it, I think that was a nay.
Was that a a nay, Mark?
No.
Okay, motion carries, uh, next item is.
The electrical inspector, uh, Kenny Hubert came before you a couple weeks ago to propose um. More services in electrical inspection, actually more than just electrical, and you guys had approved that. Um, right now, the the budget can only be moved by this thirty-eight thousand. And so that's the proposed change, thirty-eight thousand increase in salaries, uh, his beginning fund balance will be able to support that. So the increase in beginning fund balance there.
And every organization structure that's important, vice versa, you're straight, so this reflects that.
Okay.
That was the only changes that I know of, um, I think there's kind of rumblings about some other things, but they weren't officially proposed.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that's why the budget document um evolves over time, they continue the changes, so I I anticipate a few changes um. As we move along in July and August, September.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So by consensus, I'll make all of those changes in the resolution to adopt and appropriate, uh, you'll have a new.
I I would, I would hold off on that until we get to our meeting today.
So are you gonna call me back in?
We may.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
We may. If you would please, just from some individual discussions we've had.
Sounds good.
All right, um, liaison updates.
Um, actually, Anne? Oh, I have a question for you.
You, you're having a day, is it?
I am, I'm having a day, it's all right. I apologize, Anne, I did have a question for you.
Oh, okay.
I apologize. Um, I was waiting, I wanted to make sure you had time, and I just read my notes and. Question on hotel tax for Silver Lake area, and I'm not meaning to throw this on you. I got a text message from uh Tom Rourke, and they were wanting to know kind of where that process was. And what that was going to look like in terms of them getting their, their portion of some of those hotel taxes.
So that's an ordinance, it requires us going through an ordinance change. So are are you guys proposing that we change that ordinance and have the hearings and the processes to do that?
So, there's two things on, sorry, I apologize, um.
So we're. No, because I'm not in the loop, I'm, I'll talk way out in the middle.
Okay, all right. Um, two things on on that is their, through their discussions with Christmas Valley. Um, and they feel, the Silver Lake area feels like they really would like to get their portion of those dollars for their.
Emergency services, yeah.
For the, the emergency services that they provide there in Silver Lake, because they have the dinner tree, they have Summer Lake Lodge, they have a lot of these other things. And they feel like a lot of those dollars are ending up in Christmas Valley, Christmas Valley has since been in support now. Of them, them being able to get their portion of those dollars for their emergency services that they provide. So we could do this one of two ways, we could either go look for, look at a uh, a change in the ordinance. Or we, we would suggest to the Christmas Valley that they need to make sure that those dollars are allocated. Or that they make that transfer over to Silver Lake for the, the emergency services that are provided in Silver Lake. But they do that on their end, is that, is that basically what, am I seeing this for?
Yeah, there's two processes, like.
Those are the two different ways that I'm seeing this done, and I guess that's why I'm putting this to my board, is I'd like to, I'm curious where you guys stand on this. Um, it's something that Jamie Roscoe and uh has come before us and and talked to us before about this. Um, it's just kind of come down to the point now where we have to decide what it is that we'd like to do. Are we wanting to go back to the ordinances and make a change in how those dollars are distributed? Or is it something that we want to remand to the Christmas Valley group to make sure that they're allocating dollars to Silver Lake? And what would we like to see done?
Well, I'll speak to what I think would be really a good way for it is for the the two to come to an agreement. And the allocation is still the way they are, but through agreement, that portion, uh, Christmas Valley turns over to Silver Lake side. That that would be the fastest and the, one of the cleanest ways as far as I'm concerned. We reopen the ordinance, we go through a hearing process. And I'm not sure on all the changes of the state and all the allocations, what that's gonna bring forward. And the winners and the losers possibly in that. And I, I, I'm probably talked a little bit out of school here because I don't know exactly what that means. Um, as I said here, thinking of the fair and the chamber and other ones, and how that would shake out as far as allocation. I think that we get a lot of requests for other nonprofits or others to try to. Tap into some of those dollars.
Yes, the state requires a certain percentage to go to tourism or tourism-related activities. So we, we have to double-check that ORS with those motel tax dollars. But the thing with doing it through the ordinance and, you know, codifying it through the ordinance is down the road, if those two organizations aren't in agreement, it's in our ordinance. So. I. I guess I can see it both ways.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Knowing that. You, I just. If it's the right thing to do and we think it will be there for quite a while, then I think the ordinance change is probably appropriate. Instead of requiring those two organizations to make a deal and have it in their records, but then we lose. We're out of the picture at that point in time.
Correct, we are out of the picture.
And so if there's a problem on their end, we don't have any other solution other than going through our ordinance again down the road anyway.
Correct. And I suppose that's kind of what is being asked of us, Christmas Valley group hasn't come and sat before us, I've gone to their meetings. And I'm more than happy to go to their meeting again and just let them know that that's where the board is standing. And I can advocate on part of Silver Lake group that has come before us and actively asked us. To help them try and find a way to get the funding they need for their group, because I mean. We had an incident just the other day where someone had to be taken up to the hospital, and the Silver Lake crew showed up and, I mean, they did a serious emergency transport. They, they're invaluable, their, their crew are very professional, uh, the Christmas Valley crew are an incredible group. I just wanna make sure that uh. We're being asked basically to see if we can step into the middle of this and try and be a peacemaker. And and make sure that this is put down, okay, this is the way it's gonna be. We're gonna, I mean, the dollars are gonna go here and they're gonna go here, they seem both be fine with that. But like you said, things change in the future, and then all of a sudden, it's like now Silver Lake gets to come back at this, you know. Several years down the road and advocate for those dollars from the Christmas Valley basically, we hold the purse strings at that point.
Yeah.
Um, and I suppose they wanna have it set in stone, and they're looking to us to try to help with.
Yeah, and and they have to be aware, when you talk to them, that when that ordinance is opened up.
Hmm.
It doesn't mean that we're only talking about those dollars switching back and forth, right, and that any other qualifying.
Nope.
One can come forward and ask for those dollars. And then that puts quite a decision on the board of commissioners if they qualify by tourism or whatever. And so dollars could be distributed in different fashion through the, the ordinance, different percentages, different things.
Correct.
Uh, and I can't speak openly of who would come forward. You know, your chambers are gonna be there, your fair board's gonna be there, yet I don't know what other nonprofits that qualify are gonna be there.
Right.
So um, I guess. If you were to gamble, the gamble for them would be is is they want just this to go back and forth.
There's change, but other things could change, allocations, they could actually be looking at less.
Impact their percentage could be.
Compared to if they had just gone to Christmas Valley and got that allocation directly from the Christmas Valley group. Is that, is that legitimate?
They, they just need to know, they just need to know what the potentials are.
Right, and a lot of, a lot of proposals can be made through a bidding process, but it's still gonna be up to the board of commissioners to.
Yeah.
To enact the ordinance.
So, um, Mark, do you have anything on that subject? I just wanna make sure that we're being inclusive of. You know, the phone.
I have nothing more.
All right. Anything else for Anne right now?
Well, I don't really have a. Yeah, I I'm not, I'm not gonna make a motion necessarily for proposing to make this change to the ordinance. Um, it's sounding like the, if we, if I'm getting this correctly. We'd all like to see the Christmas Valley group kind of work with Silver Lake more closely to get those doumlers to Silver Lake. So I'll probably be attending one of the Christmas Valley EMS meetings and see if like we can get those emergency services, um, dollars. Directed towards Silver Lake and let them know kind of where we stand on this.
Yeah, we probably, you know, I talked to Ken individually on it, and we as board probably need to understand more. And some of the ORSs or whatever, of how these dollars can be distributed. But I think open the ordinance should be an actual request from that one of those communities to.
I think, I think Silver Lake is asking that, I think that's a pretty straight-up request from them is to change the ordinance. Silver Lake's been pretty adamant, both Tom Rourke and uh Jamie Roscoe uh have come to us and they. I I don't think Tom Rourke came before us, I don't think he made it that day, but Jamie Roscoe and Keith Little did. And so that's kind of what they're looking at, I think we've got a letter.
But we've left that, I think, if I remember, you know, remember, they were pretty comfortable to investigate, working with both, both of them. So they, they pulled back for, if they were in agreement to go with the chair, this other way of work. If they want to push forward to the ordinance, they're gonna request that, because.
Okay, well, I'll probably be updating you guys in the future, if that, if that doesn't work out, you're probably going to want to push forward with the ordinance change.
This is the process we go.
We may just have to brave it.
Uh, we, we allow process.
Yeah.
Right, and we let, let everyone know what the risks are and where we're going, so, and that's all I have, Anne, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, other way, I'll have to.
Uh, Thursday meeting uh with uh Barry Cooper of Republic Health uh on some housing issues with the Forest Service. Uh, are you intending to be there, Mark? I didn't know if you guys.
No, I, I, I talked to Barry a little bit yesterday, I, I guess as far as that's on Thursday.
Right.
Uh, what time?
Um, I believe it's three. It's like, I, I think, I think it's three o'clock, but uh I just didn't want all three of us to show up or or something like that.
Maybe a public meeting?
Right, and just make it a designated, you know, whoever's gonna go, gonna be.
I only invited you two. To keep from making it a public meeting. Cause you'll probably.
Well, you only need to, if you invite two, it's, it's a public meeting, so.
Well, I know, I know, and so that's why I only invited you here.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
So I, I'm comfortable as well with you going, you're the one that's, we invited to the committee to work on this COVID stuff and this. Alter mine with the committee as far as I'm concerned, James, I'm not speaking for Mark.
Okay.
Um, I, I have some, you, you've seen my email out there, everybody, I have some real concerns about this. I think the agencies, not just the feds, but the state and others that, that are going to bring um seasonal workforce in, uh, different things. I think the agencies, not just the feds, but the state and others that that are going to bring um seasonal workforce in, uh different things. They need to be part of figuring this out financially, they need to be a part of it. There is a shelter in place, it has to happen, but we can't trade it for what it would be. But um. Interesting.
Yep.
And concerning at the same time, I can't remember if that's why I put in my email.
I think he did use the term interesting.
Yeah, yeah, um you know, so. Yes, I'm ready for you.
Okay, alright.
Mark, you you heard it though.
There's no way I support us paying for federal employees sheltering in place.
Okay.
That should not be the county's responsibility.
Alright, thank you, um I appreciate that support.
Yeah, I think it's gonna come down to a lot of public health's responsibility.
Right, well, I'm I'm definitely not prepared to put anything additional on to the. Um you know, any of those additional responsibilities, so I appreciate that, in both of you. The uh only other thing I have was Gina Nichols sent out an email this morning. Um as some of the con- what we've been asking for is conversation with the governor. And to have better communication with the governor's office. And uh we're gonna have weekly meetings uh by district with Leah Horner. Uh from the governor's office, it's not a direct line to the governor as she's not willing, I guess, to talk to us directly still. But um these meetings I'm hoping will help. So uh if, I guess they're they're asking us to choose one commissioner to attend those meetings, um. Um what are you guys thinking, Brad?
Well, I I honestly would like to attend those meetings, but knowing knowing that um.
Yep.
I believe this COVID thing's gonna go on much longer than my tenure. I'm, I I've made a lot of. Lot of relationships over the years that's come back to the county and, you know, I'm one of the most all thirty six counties, let's get together. Um willing to sit on that, but I also sensitive to um my tenure. Now the time I'm willing to be here and I believe that this this COVID discussion's gonna go on longer than my tenure. So, um if either one of you want to do that, I would gladly do it, but I wanna be respectful. For somebody that can carry on a conversation, I think um whoever sits on it needs to be um very open. To um trying to bring all thirty six counties together, trying to, it'll be our district, and our district is Lake, Harney, Jefferson, Crook. Clamath, can't remember.
Right.
So it's um, it's a good group, a good group of commissioners, they'll call, they'll have their chair beyond us, what they'll do. But um I think it's making leaps and bounds to go in the right direction.
And this is similar to the regional solutions call.
Yes.
That has been going on, so and Leah Horner uh works with the governor's office, leading regional solutions, so. Um and you you currently attend all those calls.
Yeah, I'm on the executive board for regions.
Correct, so. I guess this is up to, Mark, what, do you have any thoughts on uh attending these meetings? I know we all just love to attend one more meeting per week, so.
I think, I I totally get. Yeah, especially things like that. But I also guess I'm on first.
Uh sorry, Mark, Mark, you're breaking up a little bit. You know, Mike. A little bit, yeah.
I I totally agree with Brad, having gone the executive committee, um. The only thing is, is that I'm the one that's kind of been pushing. Lately on trying to get the governor to work with us on developing guidelines. And so. I'd like to be on myself, but it, you know, whatever you guys like.
It's coming down to you two because I I'm I'm not necessarily wanting to be.
You're not all warm and.
I'm not, so I'm I'm kind of conference called out and and I've got a ton of other things that I think really need my attention, so.
Okay. So, Mark?
Hey, I hey Brad, what we could do is I'll just keep playing on the sidelines. Uh I'm gonna try to get a letter out for everybody to go over. In the next couple of days, I was hoping to get it done today, but it's not gonna happen. Uh and then you can go ahead and be the one on the call, uh. And I'll just keep doing what I do.
So I I've read part of the email, we became aware of this in the call this morning at seven, um. I, yes, I I'll do it, I'll I'll get on the calls. My question though, first question will be is, board of commissioners are quite busy, could some of the calls be attended by a different commissioner? Whenever we have a conflict and that would be one of the first things that I will, I will ask on that, um so.
I'll be game for that.
So you, you wanna go ahead and put my name forward then, Mark?
Yeah, we'll do that, I'll keep working on my end, the way I've been going, so.
Okay.
Maybe we could, maybe we could do, we'll pop that cop.
Okay, we'll move that forward, thank you for bringing that forward, I guess, I'll mind this too, so.
Okay.
Um, any anything else here?
No, I have nothing else to add.
Uh a quick update for me, um. The railroad, I sent out an email to the board of commissioners and others about uh. We're moving forward on our railroad to Chrissy Grant and with that two point nine million dollar loan. Agreement out there and then have to get an agreement of the operator through a surcharge to pay that loan back. We have it in draft form, I beat it up a whole bunch, um Anne has beat it up some, I have it on the agenda for the work session on the thirtieth. And what I wanna do is have constructive conversation in depth. Um so I wanna block out some time for us to look at that contractual agreement. With the holler on that line to protect the county um. And our exposure of the risk of taking on this loan, so. Um please spend some time looking at that, there's some things, Anne cut right off, I have mine marked up, I haven't put them back out to anybody. But spend some time on that, um call Toby individually if you'd like, um he will be representing the. All inside of it.
Yeah.
Um and Melanie, would you reach out to Toby and invite him to that meeting so that we have him in audience? If you can't make it in person, we need him on the phone to help and discuss this. Would also want, we will comfortably be on the phone, this is a huge, huge step. That this board of commissioners has been committed to and um so we gotta get this pushed forward. Got that going on, um fair board, um we still are looking at um fair other than level, have an affair we can. Uh we're gonna be meeting again with the partners, with the cell committee, the extension service. Roundup and others, um at what level we're able to do that. Um it was very interesting this morning with representative, state representative Mark Owens on the phone. And there's ways to segment out outdoor activities. If you have restrooms and if you have ingress and regress, we're up to two hundred and fifty. So by being creative, we should be able to consider. Um with the amount of land we have out there and the potential of things to do to build up the numbers from two hundred and fifty to more. So um I'm talking out of school right now, because I've been talking with the board, or with the cell committee and the roundup and everything. But I'm encouraged that we're going to see a fair at some level, it's not gonna be, I would anticipate it probably will not be at the level that we've seen before. Cause there's a lot of uniqueness as far as contractual agreements. For anywhere from vendors to carnivals to rodeo to concerts to on and on. There's all kinds of uniqueness to this, but each one of the partners have to deal with. But everybody's committed for our youth and for our kids in our community to make the best of this, so. Any ideas? We're wide open ideas. And volunteers on top of that. So I'm encouraged about that, to be honest with you, there is a lot of kiddos out there that spend a lot of money, them and their family, and their animals and everything. Was able to visit on my trip this last weekend to Sherman County there, I forget which county this lady was talking about. And they done a video sell, and it worked very well and they were very surprised. Of the amount of money that people are willing to still give here in this this time, so. That's one of the options out there, um I'm hoping we're able to have uh. A sell that maybe might include video, but also people involved are in person, so. Um a lot of creative thinking out there, helps the state, so. There you got my two updates right now. Mark, do you have any days on updates?
Um you guys, you guys pretty much know uh. About the the letter. And so that's went all over the place, so I'm trying to um organize my thought and. If I get feedback at the best sense.
Yeah, a little bit of feedback.
Yeah, um good so far, positive.
Does this help?
Yeah, you're fine.
Anyways, so I'm the, I'm working on a letter that I could give uh on all the commissioners and what's to do. Uh power lines, but uh. We'll try to get that done this week.
Okay.
That's my main one that I've been working on.
And you're working with Gina and Mark Owens?
Yeah.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Okay, so we're we're going to move.
I.
Go ahead, Mark, you got more, I'm sorry.
I I was hoping that I could come in, but I have to keep my arm elevated, but for bad case, so it's probably. Pretty possible I won't be in the office.
Okay, alright.
So, I I think I'll try to come in and get my computer so I can work from home and then, but then just head back here.
Melanie?
Let's go.
Melanie has delivery service, no pizza, just a computer? So.
Sounds good.
Let's get into this executive session under one ninety.